Commission meeting for April 22nd will come to order, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Present.
Mr. Gault?
Present.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mayor Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Tonight, we have Libby Wade with us tonight. Thank you, Libby, for doing our invocation with Grace Episcopal Church. And after Libby, we have a pledge of allegiance. Michael Ellen Walden, Paducah Tillman High School freshman, will do that for us. Thank you.
Let us pray. Lord God, we give you thanks for this beautiful day and for the beauty and life surrounding us in the dogwoods, in all the various trees and flowers that are blooming right now, and in the life in this room. Bless all that we do as we do it in your name and as we strive to make our city better and better. In the name of the one God we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
additions or deletions?
There are none.
Okay, I'd like to, before we go on to our presentation for the Dogwood Trail Awards, I'd like for Wanda Moore with the Paducah Women's Club and art show to come up and say just a few things. And it's a beautiful art show.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the 79th Annual Art Show for the Women's Club of Paducah. And we can't thank the artists from schoolchildren, from kindergarteners through professional artists for their participation. I will tell you that this year's show has 23 professional artists with 52 entries, 29 what we call non-professional artists with 69 entries, and 58 students with 80 entries for a grand total of 201 paintings by 120 artists. It will be on display here in the City Hall until through May the 2nd. Saturday and Sunday of this weekend, we will be here between 1 and 4. So everybody come back to see the show. Some of them, if you want to buy them, we don't sell them, but we'll tell you who will. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Wanda. Okay, and I'll have to say that this is the most beautiful time of the year for Paducah. The dogwoods are magnificent this year. We have beautiful weather, the sun is shining, and all the hard work that you all have done this year for the 50th Annual Dogwood Trail has paid off. You've done a great job, and thank you so much. So, Dabney, you want to start with the awards?
Thank you, Mayor Kayler. When we undertook the Dogwood Trail three years ago, Henry Barber, Roe Morris and I said that we wanted to make this a really special year, and each year, we kind of worked toward it. And I cannot tell you how much it means to me, how many of you have taken part and how beautifully you've displayed your yards, and how everybody in Paducah has taken an interest and done something. And I just want to thank all of you for participating because it just, I think it really does make our city shine. And it's so wonderful that we're able to do this right in time for the quilters. So the quilters are greeting, the dogwoods are greeting the quilters this year for the first time in a long time, and they could not be prettier. So thank you so much. I'd also like for my team to stand up. Carol Vanderbeau, who did our gorgeous dogwood pins. Mary Lynn Thompson, our co-chair. Henry Barber, who is our tree expert and prognosticator. Henry was right on the money for the trees this year. And Roe Morris, who is, who was with us for almost three years, had to drop out because of family issues, stuff. And, but I want her to stand up too, because she has been just as much a part of everything as anybody on the team. Thank you so much, Roe. And one other person I'd like to recognize tonight, I cannot possibly thank everybody that has helped us, because we've just had so many, and it's been wonderful. But I'd like for Pam Spencer to stand up, please. She's the Information Officer for the city. And Pam has been such a great help to me. Thank you so, so very much. Okay, we'll get started, because we have a lot. Mayor Kayler, will you come forward? I'm going to start at the bottom of your, of your list at the page. We're going to start with the Dogwood Art and Photography Contest Winners. We'll start with the art first. And in first place for the art competition is Sherri Paxton. In second place, we have James Hank. And in, oh, okay, come back for a photograph. Have to get a photo op. And in third place, we have Haley Duncan. Is Haley here tonight? Okay, we'll get that to her. We'll make sure she gets that. All right, next, we have the photography contest. And our first prize winner is Michael G. Smith. I hope everybody's been in the mayor's office to see them on display. All of the winners are in the mayor's art club exhibit. Our second place winner is Phyllis Russell. And our third place winner is Paul Grumley. Paul is now retired, and so I imagine we're going to be seeing a lot more, many more photographs from Paul. Got that taken care of? Okay. Did you get that, Roe? Oh, I'm looking for off trail. Here we go. I think I'm going to skip around on your sheet, and I'm going to do the, let's see if I can find them, the off-trail awards first. Here we go. And we, and now, as you come up for your Dogwood Award, if you'd like to, Mayor Kayler, maybe you'd like to stand over here by the dogwood tree. We have all of our dogwoods out in front of the City Hall, right out in the doors that you came in, they're on either side of the doors, and you may pick your dogwood and take it home with you. And your photographs are also downstairs in the foyer where you came in and we had our refreshment. So if you will get your photograph and your dogwood before you leave, and we will present you with your certificate here tonight. And the first off-trail award goes to Chris and Jenny Hudson. I don't have their address, and they're on Friedman Lane. Our next winner is Linda Baskin. Linda? Then we have Blaine and Mary Hunter Hancock. I thought I saw them here earlier. Here we go. Thank you so much. And our last off-trail award goes to Rick and Jenny Cothark. All right, and now we'll start with our on-trail awards. Our first award goes to Tom and Amy Gruber. Are the Grubers here tonight? Yes. Yeah, I think so. Let's do it in front of the dogwood, just so they, photo ops, sorry. Thank you. Wonderful. And then our next one is Jim and Linda Gould. Then we have David and Jeannie Stroop. Our next winner, Lynn and Tara Williams. They're here tonight, not, okay, we'll take care of that one, thank you. And our next on-trail winner, winners, Charlie and Sally Proctor. Our next one, Lydia May on Buckner Lane. Lydia is new to our neighborhood, and she just did an outstanding job. We have a lot on trail. This year, Jerry and Martha Hinton. Are they not here? Then we have Greg and Nan Waldrop. I didn't see them earlier. Oh, good, there's Greg. Okay, Greg. Come on up here. And we also, I think this is our last one, I'll double check, am I correct? Yes, Hal and Debbie Sullivan. She said he did all the work, so he used to hold the, hold the award. Josh, they're not, they're, they're not here. And our, our last one that's not here tonight are the Quamboof, is that correct, Gail? Josh and, what was her first name? Josh and Jill Quamboof on Broadway, and they were not able to be here either, but we do want to announce their name. Now I'm going to move on to the church award, and it goes to Grace Episcopal Church. Accepting is Libby Wade, our minister, and this is Blaine Hebert. Come on over, yeah, come on over there. Blaine did all the work. I've still got the special awards, and that will be it. And our first special, we had special awards done this year because we felt like for the 50th, we needed something to sort of, you know, address that. And so, this year, we gave a baby dogwood award to sort of encourage people to plant, and they did. And this year's award goes to Richard and Sandra DeMent. Then, we wanted to honor some of our gorgeous, really old dogwood trees. And this one was a difficult decision, because we had so many in town, actually. But this goes to Paul and Juliette Grumley, the Grand Old Dogwood Award. A grand old dogwood. And our final on-trail and special award goes to Jeff and Sue Ellen Johnson. They received the Dolly McNutt Award, nicknamed "The Dolly." And this is for outstanding performance, and not just this year, but every year for I do want to thank, just, just stay there. I do want to thank all of our nurseries one more time, because for the last three years, they've worked with us and had sales with us, and you have bought. You have bought, you've bought hundreds of dogwoods, and it shows this year. They're just absolutely gorgeous. But we had Blooms and Gardens, Eads, Edwards, Montgomery Gardens, Sanders and Walls, and they all participated in a big way, and we really appreciate their support. And now, I believe that Mayor Kayler has one more award to present.
I am proud to make this presentation tonight. It's a Duchess of Paducah Award to Carol Vanderbeau. Oh, no, you deserve it.
Well, the committee.
All of these beautiful pins and all the extra work that you've done all these years for Paducah. You deserve it.
Well, thank you, thank you so much.
To all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. Know ye that Carol Vanderbeau is named a Duchess of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges and responsibilities thereto appertaining, in testimony whereof I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah on the 22nd day of April in the year of our Lord 2014. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And I have one more Duchess tonight, and that's Dabney Haw.
I'm excited for Carol.
Well, listen, you have worked so hard. You, you deserve this, definitely.
But it has been a team effort, she's right.
To all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. Know ye that Dabney Haw is named a Duchess of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges and responsibilities thereto appertaining, in testimony whereof I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah the 22nd day of April in the year of our Lord 2014. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you for your hard work. And Dabney presented the city of Paducah with a beautiful throw designed by Jim Hank. And Jim, I'd just like to thank you for your design. It's, it's beautiful, and we'll keep it out in the front entrance of the mayor's office. And he put his mother's name on it, and Joanne does not like a lot of accolades, but Joanne, you deserve that. So thank you for all your hard work in the past on the Dogwood Trail for Paducah.
I think she did get her phone. You might want to. Thanks for coming.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for April 8, 2014, and April 15, 2014, city commission meetings can be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to motions. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Document certificates of liability insurance, Vanguard Contractors LLC, Louisville Having Company, Inc., ICA Engineering, Inc., commissioners' deed for 2400 Spruce Street, quitclaim deeds for alley closing from Bethel Street toward Main Street, fraternal orders of Eagles, Inc., Douglas and Sue Ingram, agreements and contracts, memorandum of understanding with the Columbia Club, Inc., for the Columbia Theater Agreement with Tag Truck Center, LLC, to purchase a rear Packer refuse collection truck, change order number two with ICA Engineering, Inc., for the Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation Project, lease agreement with Oscar Cross and Girls Club of Paducah, Inc., for armory building located at 2956 Park Avenue, addendum number two, the agreement to employ Jeffrey A. Peterson as city manager, contract for services with Lower Town Renaissance Association, Inc., change order number one with Jim Smith Contracting, LLC, for the Ohio Riverboat Launch Project, Paducah McCracken County E-911 Center file emergency communications report, final emergency communications report, March 2014, Paducah Police Department 2013 annual report, audit report performed by Wayne Shelton, CPA, for the Paducah McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau, bids for engineering public works, two diesel dump trucks, Tag Truck Center winning bid, and mid-10 Ford.
Is everyone okay with this? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please. We'll go to municipal orders.
On the recommendation of the city manager of the board of commissioners, have the city of Paducah in order the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Aye, second.
Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
Ma'am, sorry. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a 2014 land and water conservation fund grant in the amount of $75,000 through the Kentucky Governor's Office for Local Development, for development of the 14th Street Park Project Phase One be adopted.
Second.
Hi, Steve. Hello, good evening. This is phase one of the 14th Street property. What this phase will allow us to do is create a multipurpose open play area. They'll be able to have community events there. It'll be a finished field for lacrosse, frisbee, soccer, many different types of events that that field can't be used right now. Currently, there's many different utilities within that area. All that has to be cleaned up, regraded, reseated. Phase two in the future, at the end of this, we will have a multipurpose field. Phase two could include many different things. That could also be in the future. That's a possibility of, of a walking trail, additional landscaping, upgrades to the, the community garden at the corner of 14th Street and, I believe it's Madison Street.
Is that where the community garden is now?
That's correct.
How did the community input go? I didn't get to attend that night.
It was, it was fair, actually better than a lot of public hearings that we have. We did do some reach out. I think it was all said and done, 14 people signed up in favor as part of the application to the state.
It'll be a wonderful green space for the community.
I quite often get phone calls from different organizations throughout the community wanting to rent that space, or at least occupy that space on a Sunday afternoon for different types of events. Because of some of the sinkholes and stuff in the property, at this time, we're not allowing them to do that.
Thank you. Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for a 2014 port security grant in the amount of $167,700 for the purchase of mobile and portable radios for the Paducah Police Department be adopted.
Second. Chief?
Fire department.
All of us.
All of you.
Yeah. It's a combined grant that we have the opportunity to apply for every year. We are pooling our resources to attempt to make a good push on changing out some of the radios that we know that are going to be at end of life. I think you've heard me talk about this from the 911 perspective. Our, our main radio that is, runs out of dispatch is coming to end of life, and as a result, some of the periphery communication devices that we have are also going to be at end of life and will not be able to be upgraded. So we're trying to be proactive about that and minimize the impact of the general fund that that's going to be for us to be able to operate by applying for these grant funds. And you see, what you see in this grant application is it's spread across three departments, police, fire and, and engineering, public works. We include the minimum because they're flood wall managers. You got to tie it to the port security maritime industry there. So since we provide those services to those areas, that's, that's the basis of which we've applied for the grant.
Are these phones the, what, the newer 800 megawatt, megahertz phones that, explained by, is this all about interconnective where police and fire by talks to one another? Is that what this is sort of all about?
Well, these are actually radios, not phones, and we're, we already operate off 800 megahertz. It's just a system that we're on is coming to the end, end of life. You can't replace it any, you know, you can't repair anything else. It's, it's, technology has outgrown its capabilities, and it's no longer supported by the manufacturer. So that's something that we, we're seeing with everything that we have associated with technology nowadays. It's a common occurrence. So as, as we start to plan for the upgrade, the radios that we, we have some radios that will make that transition, and we have some that will not. So that's, that's what you see here in the grant, is we're making that push to take care of those that will not upgrade to the new system when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a 2014 community development block grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Office of the Governor's Department for Local Government for the Four Rivers Recovery Center Point Project be adopted.
Second.
Steve?
Yes, ma'am. This is a yearly maintenance CDBG, I like to refer to it as. Every year, we come before the, the city commission for approval. It's for the Four Rivers Recovery Center. It's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, any questions? Good.
This, now you got my train of thought on that stuff. Piece of, piece of property on Olivet Church Road. It's one of the few that's left. We took a little bit of sabbatical as we worked through some things on that, so we've reinitiated that. And one thing that I'd like to share with you all is that you'll see some pink stakes that are out there. We're actually making progress. We're going to be bringing some things to you all, probably your next commission meeting, on our reimbursement agreements with utility companies with Paducah Water, Paducah Power, and JSA. JSA's already led a contract for moving their portion of the project or their portion of the sewer that needs to be moved, so that's coming up. And then also, if you do drive out there, you'll see pink stakes where Paducah Power's getting ready to move the pole lines and stuff for that. So, we're underway on that.
What is the expected completion date?
I would anticipate, Commissioner Wilson, we would be looking at probably the end of next summer. There's no way that this project order magnitude, we'll get started on it this summer with some roadway work that won't too much interrupt flow. We might be in the open country on that. We have our restriction with the mall that we can't work between November 1st and January the 15th because of, you know, the shopping season. And then also getting the utilities out of the way and letting a contract going on that. But I anticipate we will be finished with the project by the end of summer 2015.
It really needs it. I was out there over the weekend and it needs some improvements.
It's been on hold because of this ongoing, just working through the project.
And I called you about this, Rick, but in case, in case people have a question about it, the road that's owned by the mall, the potholes are not maintained by the city.
Or anybody else for that.
Make sure that everyone...
Well, actually, okay, well, a little clarity there.
The road right in front of the parking area. Right in front of the parking area.
Yeah, a little clarity there. We do have what is referred to as the ring road that goes around the mall. That portion that's behind the restaurants, you know, I don't want to name them by name, but that run, that portion of the road that runs parallel with US 60, that's owned by the mall. That portion that runs beside it by JC Penney's is ours. The portion that runs behind it is the mall's. But now, that portion that's between Dave's Bridle, or no, Old Navy, and Sears, that portion of the ring road actually belongs to the City of Paducah. So, we are responsible for fixing potholes in that portion of the parking lot that we bought from the Caffaro Company about two years ago. So, that portion is. So, that's...
So, have you filled them?
Yes. We have filled some, and as I drive out there and I see those, is that mine?
I know, because there are some deep ones.
Is that the mall's? Because, you know, there's a division line. It's out there, but you can't see it. But yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Right. I move that a municipal order entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid for sale to the City of two diesel dump trucks to be used by the Engineering Public Works Department, Street Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Tag Truck LLC in the amount of $183,732 for sale to the City of two diesel dump trucks for use by the Street Division of the Engineering Public Works Department and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Need a second.
Second.
Mayor Commission, this is a continuation of the fleet purchasing plan that was planned for this year. We've got two dump trucks. These are the larger two-and-a-half ton dump trucks that you see driving out in town. The ones we're replacing are currently 14-years-old.
And it's part of the budgeted amount that we use for...
Actually, the budgeted amount was $180,000, and we're $3,000 in excess of that for those two vehicles combined.
Right. Any questions?
I read my mind. I just asked how old, what kind of condition.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety for the Heads Up, Don't Be Intoxicated Mini Grant Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety in the amount of $21,000 for the presentation of the Heads Up, Don't Be Intoxicated Program presented by the Paducah Police Department. No local cash match is required.
Second. Chief, how are you?
I'm very well, mayor. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you all to speak about this. We are pretty fond of our grants, especially when it comes to distracted driving. This is one of those grants offered to us through the State Highway Department. This is our grant that you may have seen or heard something about that's in partnership with the Cole Tharp family. Hillary Cole Tharp was an occupant of a vehicle in when she had a terrific, or a horrific, excuse me, collision several years ago. She is able to tell about it now, and her message is what we are using to drive this program. We have been inside the schools, elementary schools, high schools, inside civic groups, meeting with church groups. It's just part of our mission to educate, you know, to follow up on the enforcement, to educate and make aware of the hazards of distracted driving.
It's a good program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby amend Section 126-76 Sign Regulations of Chapter 126 Zoning of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to change approval of event banners over Broadway, Broadway pole banners, Jefferson Street pole banners, and Lower Town pole banners from Engineering Public Works Department to the Parks Services Department.
Second.
Chief, how are you?
I'm very well, mayor. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you all to speak about this. We are pretty fond of our grants, especially when it comes to distracted driving. This is one of those grants offered to us through the State Highway Department. This is our grant that you may have seen or heard something about that's in partnership with the Cole Tharp family. Hillary Cole Tharp was an occupant of a vehicle in when she had a terrific, or a horrific, excuse me, collision several years ago. She is able to tell about it now, and her message is what we are using to drive this program. We have been inside the schools, elementary schools, high schools, inside civic groups, meeting with church groups. It's just part of our mission to educate, you know, to follow up on the enforcement, to educate and make aware of the hazards of distracted driving.
It's a good program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby amend Section 126-76 Sign Regulations of Chapter 126 Zoning of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to change approval of event banners over Broadway, Broadway pole banners, Jefferson Street pole banners, and Lower Town pole banners from Engineering Public Works Department to the Parks Services Department.
Second.
Yes, this is really more of a streamlining proposal. With Parks Services issuing the actual permits for events, we thought it prudent that the Parks Service Director should also be the one reviewing the process, that we can keep it all in one house. So, this is for Jefferson Street, Lower Town, and Downtown.
Do we put banners up anywhere else? Jefferson all the way out?
Jefferson, Broadway, Lower Town. I think that's primarily it.
Okay, I read it, and I've already forgotten it. What about the feather flags for the Arts and Music Festival in May in Lower Town? Does that change?
I'm sorry?
Do we still get the feather flags, the colorful feather flags?
Yeah, I think that's part of the permitting process through the Parks Department.
That doesn't change.
I can't answer that question, sorry. That's not part of this ordinance right here.
Okay, it's not, okay.
No. It's part of the permitting process through the Parks Department.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by intent to annex certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Proving intent to annex a tract of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 3025 Olivet Church Road containing 4.946 acres, more or less.
Second. And I'd just like to read this, Steve, before you talk a little bit on this.
Absolutely.
On March 21st, you received a letter that said, "We would like to request annexation of our property located at 3025 Olivet Church Road, known as Hucks Number 377, from McCracken County into the city limits of Paducah. We hereby authorize representatives from Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering to represent us at this request. Thank you for your consideration." Okay?
Yes, it's a consensual annexation by the property owner. You'll also notice that we have, at our request, included the, some of the Olivet Church right-of-way up to Olivet Village, so we actually connect those two areas, so we're not coming into the city, out of the city.
Thank you.
The next steps on this is it'll go back to the Planning Commission for a map amendment and zone change, and then within 60 days, we'll be coming back to the city commission with a final annexation ordinance and then the zone change request.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 42 Environment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance abolishes Section 4246(c) enhanced standards for Fountain Avenue Revitalization Project of Chapter 42 Environment of the Paducah Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Steve?
Yes, this was actually established in 2006. A year later is when we established the Hark Regulation, Design Regulations within Fountain Avenue. At this time, right now, what we're asking to is repeal those original enhanced standards to allow us better to market the existing properties that we have. And I think it also should be noted that the design guidelines that are in place are adopted, and they'll be regulated by the Historical and Architecture Review Commission, meaning anything, any changes to the exterior appearance of any of those structures within Fountain Avenue will still be required to go before the Hark Board for approval, which will take place of some of these enhanced standards.
So, what has actually changed? I mean, what...
What we're going to be doing is really going back to the same type of regulations that they have everywhere else in the City of Paducah. I mean, they'll have to follow the Kentucky Building Code, and also they'll have to follow the design guidelines very similar to what they have in Lower Town right now. Those two are in place. The one thing that we're going to be doing is lessening the requirements as it relates to the enhanced standards. For instance, one requirement there says that if you have spent over $20,000, that you have to replace all of your HVAC systems unless you can prove otherwise. Those types of things, we're going to back off a little bit. Still require them to meet all the other standards that other areas in the city require as well as those design standards.
So, if we were, if we were neighbors of one of these homes, we would see, you know, diminution of standards, or, we'd be happy as neighbors. This would not be a bad thing for our neighborhood.
Right. New roofs, siding, anything visible from the exterior still has to be submitted and approved by the Historical and Architecture Review Commission.
Any other questions? You didn't have any, Carol?
No. He refreshed my memory on what enhanced standards were. I was going to ask for a couple of examples, but I remember.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance abolishing the current Main Street Department ordinance and creating an advisory board to be known as the Paducah Main Street Board of Directors, providing for the appointment and terms of members and establishing the role and purpose of said board. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby abolishes Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 6 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances entitled, Main Street Department abolishes Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 15, entitled Paducah Renaissance Alliance Advisory Board, and creates a new section in code ordinances in Chapter 2, Article 6, to establish the Paducah Main Street Board of Directors.
Second. Okay, Steve?
Yes, I have a little presentation, if I can, for you all. This action, I think, reflects the reorganization of the Department of Main Street that placed programming and associated function activities and resources with other city departments, and I'll talk a little bit about that. This board will assist with the Main Street accreditation process, coordinate with downtown development specialists, in promoting mission of the Main Street and Four Point Approach, which is design, organization, promotion, economic restructuring. Will participate in planning, and also will work and form citizens in volunteering committees as reasonable and necessary to assist in the Main Street function. There has been two new positions already created. Molly Tomasalo with the Parks Office, and Melinda Winchester, the Downtown Development Specialist, which is going to talk here in just a minute. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm going to be functioning, I am functioning now as the Main Street Manager, and we are going to continue with the National Main Street Four Point Approach of Design Promotions, Economic Structuring, and Organization. I will be the liaison with the new Main Street Board of Directors, the committees, business and property owners, and the nonprofit organizations. Right now, we're currently reviewing Main Street and Lower Town incentive packages and working on proposing some new programs for building rehabilitation and occupancy. And we'll also be reviewing some strategies for targeted retail recruitment. And we'll be reviewing codes to encourage a mixed-use development, and I'll be meeting with the Design Committee on Design Guidelines. Oops, hit the wrong button, Steve. Sorry. All right, hit the wrong button.
There we go.
Promotional activities, we would like to really be working with the Lower Town Marketing Association of Lower Town Property Owners and Stakeholders, and also work on a Downtown Association, and work with these associations to conduct promotional activity utilizing their initiative and their creativity as the stakeholders. Support funding could be made available, you know, under the guidelines that will be developed. Right now, I'm still working on our social media presence. I'm Facebook posting events. I have so many people sending me their events that they want posted, so I'm doing a lot of posting and promotions on Facebook. We are still working on our new logo for Paducah Main Street. I think we're getting very close to having that done. And the website, we're working on updates on the website as well. The newsletter, I just sent out the first e-blast yesterday, so we are, we are in a design process still with this, so as soon as we get the new logo, this will be changing a little bit. But we are calling it "The Lowdown" as our newsletter name, and I got some very positive feedback from people yesterday when I sent that out. I am still working on introductions with key stakeholders and partners. I have met several of the business owners, property owners, gallery owners, artists. I've been by The Chamber, the CVB. I'm working with them on several different things. Local banks, real estate board, I'm actually working with them on one of our promotions coming up I'll talk about in just a little bit. Quilt Show Treasure Map starts tomorrow. That's been very interesting so far. I'm excited about that one. We did a little bit change in the format this year, and I think everybody's going to really like it. The next event I'm working on trying to get organized is called Showcase Paducah. I'm working with the realtors and anyone who has a vacant or for lease property in[1708.96] The next event I'm working on trying to get organized is called Showcase Paducah, working with the realtors and anyone who has a vacant or for lease property in Lower Town and Downtown, any existing properties or gallery owners that want to participate. We're going to really try to increase exposure of these type of buildings for Paducah. And also, we are working on the organization of the Fall Kentucky Heritage Council Conference, which will be hosted by the City of Paducah in late October. So that will be a two-and-a-half-day event for the city, and it'll bring a lot of people here, preservationists here, too, so it'll be exciting. Historic Tax Credits, one of my primary goals, because of my background, is to meet with property owners and real estate professionals to do presentations regarding the financial incentives involved with historic tax credits. In fact, I just finished my first one with the property owner on Broadway today, got it packaged up, she's sending it off, and I have one more that I'll have done by Friday. So that's already, the word's already getting out, and I'm already working with some of these business owners on those. I have met with several people that are interested in purchasing buildings downtown, and of course, I've talked to them about the tax credits as well, so that's exciting. And I think we're back to Steve.
Real quickly, just for the public, I'd like to go through a few things that are happening in Lower Town and Downtown. Demolition approval has been received for four twenty-seven North Sixth Street from the Historical and Architecture Review Commission. I would imagine here, within the next month, demolition will occur on that property. The city did gain rights of the property at four thirty-three, four thirty-five, within the last month. We did not meet the right of reversion. Over the next month, Melinda's going to be working on trying to market that property. It is located on an arterial, structurally, I think it's sound. We're going to see if we can find someone to take that structure on.
How long, how long do you think you'll do that?
How long what?
Try to merchandise that property?
Well, for some time. With the right of reversion not met, I think there may be a little bit of liability if we went ahead and went through demolition right now. So I'm thinking we may try to keep it for eight to ten months and see what happens. And certainly after eight months, if nothing happens, we can start the process of the bid process for demolition, but we have, have that approval. Gary Jackson, anytime she should be starting construction on his new house at five seventeen North Fifth. Henry Rudy at five oh five North Fifth Street, right next door, will be starting construction. You may have seen the pad's canopy that's being constructed right now. Paducah School of Art and Design, I know you're all aware of this, but for the public, Madison Hall is complete. It's a home to ceramics, metals, jewelry making, and three D design classes. The Sculpture Building, which should be completed here soon, will house studios for clay, woodworking, welding, and metal fabrication, as well as foundry for bronze casting. The Kitchens Building, it's thirty thousand square feet for two D design, painting, photography, and graphic design. It will have substantial gallery space. All of the Fine Arts and Visual Communication Courses will move to the Paducah School of Art and Design Campus once construction is complete. Right now, they're in the middle of a two million dollar campaign for the completion of the Kitchens Building, and they're confident that construction could start by July first of this year. And, you know, I believe this is a significant event in the evolution of Lower Town and the Lower Town Arts District. There's a picture of the kitchens. Couple of structures in Lower Town, they're recently sold. Staff has been working with the property owner on, on both the design guidelines that Hark enforces, also tax credits. Those, both of those structures can only have one or two family land uses going in them, and that's a picture of the, the two structures. Posh Academy will be opening at some point. It's an arts-related daycare at seven nineteen Madison Street. Seven seventeen Harrison Street, over the last week, that house changed colors to its final color. She will be opening the Paintin' Place in August, and that is a, a structure that the city is actually constructing. Property owner will, will finalize the mortgage when complete. Yizer is, the RFP is due May fifth of two thousand and fourteen. I'm excited to, for some proposals to come in on that. The selection will come back to the City Commission when we receive them, and those will be based upon use of space, rehab plan for interior and exterior, and cost, and of course, the financial ability to complete the project. That's coming up soon. Gateway Entry Feature, Melinda's been working with the WKCTCS on partnering for a new landmark sculpture sign at the corner of Martin Luther King and Ninth that would welcome guests into the Lower Town Arts District, as well as the Paducah School of Art and Design. Downtown Tribeca Inn, the Roof Stabilization Project is complete. They're moving forward on that project, Melinda's working with them on tax credits, and they're working with the Fire Prevention Division on the building plans. Tom Dunn, within the last several weeks, has completed the roof stabilization on that project and the reconstruction of the fifth floor. He is going to be meeting in the next several weeks with contractors to start talking about build-out. He's looking at first floor retail slash restaurant, and then residential on second through fifth floors. Of course, McMurray and Livingston is finishing up their project. Carl and John Berry's finishing up their residential commercial project, and as well as Columbia Theater, that has been transferred, and the Brownsville Grant has been mailed. Downtown Development Incentives Review and Recommendations, a report on existing and proposed incentives in Lower Town and Downtown has been completed. From this report, we believe that the future incentives should be based on overall benefit to the citizens, and the impact that it has on the historic built environment in that historic district. Some of the existing incentives that we looked at was the Roof Stabilization, Stabilization Program, which was utilized this year, the Retail Fence Program, which was adopted in two thousand and seven, the Artist Relocation Program, which was started in, I believe, two thousand and one, the Facade Loan Program, which has been part of Downtown for many years, property, property acquisition rehabilitation inducement. The tax credits have been around, have not been utilized much, and of course, we've always had promotional events. Some incentives that we've considered, certainly the Facade Grant Program, but revised, a Roof Stabilization Program, the existing one, we would probably recommend going forward that we revise that slightly also, a Business Development Program, and a program that I'm excited about is an Upper Story Residential Construction Program, and that is, you know, I, I think it would be great to double the number of residential dwelling units on the Upper Story of the structures in, along Broadway and Downtown. When, when you start doing that, you take care of a lot of the other structural issues with structures, meaning the roofs, the facade, a lot of times first floor retail, so I think that's important, and also the historic preservation tax credits, and that is it.
Can we go back to the reorganization of the board?
Yes.
What, the original board that was for PRA, that, you know, it originally was like five members, I think, and then was expanded, that was approved by here, what happens to that board?
The Advisory Board, by this ordinance, the Advisory Board would not exist anymore, and there would be a new Paducah Board of, Main Street Board of Directors.
And it would go back to just five?
That's correct.
So are those people aware? I mean, I meant to ask you, call you, or ask you before, but?
Yes, the chairperson of the Board of Advisors sent out a letter to all of the members explaining to them of the reorganization process that has been done.
And we feel like five members is enough for the Paducah Main Street Board?
That's what we're recommending, that's correct, because we are also going to have all of the, the Design Committee, the Promotions Committee, you know, the Economic Restructuring Committee, so we're going to have several other committees with board members also, or members. We have asked the original Advisory Board if they'd be interested in serving on some of the subcommittees of the Main Street, that we'd certainly like them to be a part of those.
Any other questions for Steve? We've gone back and forth many times with the number of people on that board. What was the original Main Street Board, Carol?
The original Main Street Board was thirteen members, but at that time, keep in mind, they had to do a lot of fundraising, and there was a lot of other work in the community, and now, the budget doesn't, it's provided completely by the city, so, and, and I haven't discussed this with you, but my guess is, that's probably a different approach.
Yes, and of course, a lot of the event planning will no longer be under the umbrella of Main Street, that will now be with the Parks Department.
You know, it's always difficult to get a quorum. I mean, the smaller the number, the easier it is to get a quorum, and, and using a, a lot of people involved in, in the organization and design, and everyone gets a voice, and they can recommend things, and you get everyone involved, and that, that's the traditional Main Street approach.
I think it's a, a little more refined, a little more targeted, when you think about it, because they're having more focused committees that will offer opportunities for a lot of people outside that five-person board to be involved, and bring in a lot of expertise and, and enthusiasm.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number two zero zero two dash one zero six five eight nine, entitled, an ordinance approving the concept of growth through annexation agreements. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby amends ordinance number two zero zero two dash one zero six five eight nine to set the amount being reimbursed to the developer, developer to not exceed the total costs of the municipal services, or the total sum of all ad ver lorum rule property taxes collected by the City of Paducah from the developed property, whichever is less over ten-year period.
Second.
Steve?
I think that was a pretty good explanation. The amendment is for ten years, actually setting this out by ordinance. If you remember, in the past, we would have different requests to us, and then we'd have to bring those requests to the Commission. This spells it out by ordinance, the number of years that, that the reimbursement will happen. Of course, that reimbursement will not be in excess of the actual ad ver lorum property taxes collected, or the cost of the infrastructure improvements.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty oh five dash one dash sixty-nine twenty-one, entitled, approving the concept of expedited growth through developer agreements, which promote residential infill development. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah amends ordinance number twenty oh five dash one dash sixty-nine twenty-one to establish a time of ten years that the city will reimburse the developer for the actual costs incurred in connection with the construction of qualified municipal facilities, streets, gutters, and other public infrastructure with the property to be developed.
Second.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Steve?
At least we don't, we no longer have the let's make a deal.
Yeah.
At least we have it. An ordinance.
Makes it easier, doesn't it, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
City Managers Report?
We have a pre-budget presentation tonight. City Finance Officer Perkins and Pam Spencer, PIO and myself will make that, so I'm going to step over to the podium so we can, a little teamwork. It's been my practice, since I've been here, this will be my fourth budget cycle with city, to engage the City Commission in a, what I call a pre-budget workshop ahead of the actual presentation of the budget. As you know, in Kentucky, in City Manager Cities, it's the responsibility of the City Manager to prepare and present the City Commission with a balanced budget proposal, and you pick it up from there and, and conduct a decision-making process leading up to the eventual adoption of the budget. So we are planning in actively underway with the budget preparation, but as in years prior, we want to give you a little idea of what some of the parameters are, we're working under, what some of the trends are, we're seeing, and maybe a little bit of lead notice of what some of the major decision points for you might be when we bring the proposed budget forward. Some of the general fund development assumptions and proposals, taxation, we continue to rely on existing resources, except for property tax revenue growth as permitted by law. Last year, we took the allowable four percent growth, and we are going to propose that we do that again. Our cash reserve policy, currently, it is by policy at eight percent. John and staff feel that it's worth the effort to try to increase that, bolster it up to ten percent, and they're endeavoring to, to try to do that. The balanced budget this year, the balancing process, because of some modest growth in general fund revenue, this year, for the first time in several years, we think is allowing us to at least consider addressing some funding deficits that have occurred in some operational accounts over the course of the past half a dozen years or so, when we've been through a pretty extensive belt tightening process. Operating expenses in the general fund, the expenses of all the city operations borne by the general fund, which are street, fire, police, and that sort of thing, will continue to concern, consume virtually all of the revenue, or the financial resources that the general fund produces. Again, the point being, at the operational level, consume all of that, leaving little or nothing to finance capital improvements, or capital, large capital such as equipment purchases out of the general fund. The capital improvements plan of significance, that is something that really picked up last year. We started with a five-year projection on the investment fund after I arrived, which was a look forward, but yet very much a one-year-at-a-time planning tool. Finance has enhanced upon that by starting a CIP process that really kicked into gear in earnest last year, but is being kicked further forward this year, to, at least for planning purposes, give us the ability to look further out, to capture the funding needs of our, of our capital projects. I'm now going to ask Pam Spencer to talk to you about an effort that is being made in this budget process, to make the budget more communicative to both you and the general public, and whoever cares to pick it up and read it once it's adopted, or when it's presented as well, so Pam, if you would.
You've all seen one of these, this is our big budget book, I just grabbed one off the shelf, it's about three hundred pages, and the way it's organized, the first part has the, the City Manager's Letter, and that has a lot of wonderful information in there, but then it goes into each department and division, and at the beginning of each department or division, there's a, a page that describes things, and, let me just turn to one page, I've got one marked here, and that's kind of the way it looks, just one of those pages right there. Well, that's our budget narrative for before every department and every division. So we wanted to look to see what some other cities were doing, to see if we could improve this. This is where each person could go and take a look at, say, a division of planning, or a division of engineering, and, and read what, what's going on in those different divisions. So I looked at several other cities, and I kind of took the best of other cities, what I liked, and so we're going to change this budget narrative for each division and each department, and it's going to have five sections. The first section is just the overview of that department or division. It's going to also have an organizational chart, a quick visual thing for somebody to see of how that department is organized. It's also going to have the highlights of this current fiscal year, and that could be programming changes, did you add a new vehicle to your fleet, did you change some things, did you gain some efficiencies, what big changes did you have? Did you have an award in your department? It would just be a good place to have all of your highlights from that fiscal year. And then for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, it'll have some bullet points of any new initiatives, what's the overview that you're looking for in that department or division, any changes, any programming changes. Then it would have the budget summary, which is that chart that's in every department or division, that goes back four years, of just a quick glance of how that budget has changed over those four years. That same chart will be in there, but then after that, they'll have a, a budget narrative, compare the two fiscal years. If you've got personnel costs that have gone down, why? Did you combine positions? What happened? Did you have another part that maybe have gone, has gone up? Well, did you add a new program? Explain the financial change, so it will show the percent differences in that budget narrative. I think this is going to be a great tool for the public to go to, they could go, say, to the Engineering Public Works Department, look at the street division, and learn a lot about that division, and how things have changed, what their operations are like, and their responsibilities. So it's something that every department's having to work through, and every department head is working through, trying to take all the information that they already know and put it to where the public can better understand it. So, did I get?
Thank you, Pam. One thing I would mention that would be very appropriate for directors to put in this section would be, for example, any new program expansions or initiatives that are associated with the planning process that came forth from the community-wide survey, the three committees that were spun off, and some of the recommendations that came out of there. I'd like to see those mentioned in here, in the instances where a, a, a new program, or an expanded program is coming as a result of that process.
That is exactly what I was thinking when, when you talked about the reorganization and looking at other cities. We talked about those in our, in our committee meetings, and to make the more user-friendly, more connected, citizen, to be more connected to, to their tax dollars, so I, I think this is a great, this is a great piece.
Glad to hear that. Okay, John Perkins is going to share with you some more detailed information about some of the general fund trends, the direction that some of our major revenues are going, so on, so forth, to give you an idea, a window to look into the, as I mentioned, the parameters, constraints, or whatever around which we're, we're trying to build this budget, and he will point out any significant directional changes that, that, that are coming about this year. John?
I refer to this section as the recent history lessons. This is the current budget, and as you can see, the biggest part there is about seventy-six percent for people, wages, there are fringe benefits, and that's followed by, you can see the list of all the items. That leaves about twenty-four percent of the general fund to be, to cover things like insurance and fuel, utilities, and all those things that we have to deal with. insurance and fuel, utilities, and all those things that we have to deal with. This is a snapshot. We selected going back to seven because that's right before the recession took place. And we wanted you to get a perspective of this. In seven, you can see that personal service, again, that's wages and fringe benefits, made up about seventy-four percent of, of the entire general fund expenditure. And then you can see in a couple of years there, I think it's in fiscal. Looks like fiscal nine, fiscal ten. We actually overall dropped, actually spent less money than the year before, a couple of years in a row. And that's when the recession took place. And at the same time, that's when we did some RIFs in April of two thousand and nine, and tried to restructure the way we did business. And by doing that, you can see that the ratios stayed about the same. While we, you can see personal services may have continued to creep up, the overall budget didn't. And so we had to work with a smaller overall resource to deal with continuing growth. And you can see at the bottom there, we don't know exactly what fifteen's going to be yet. Those are guesses, but we're probably pretty close. And again, we expect that it will stay, you know, between seventy-four and seventy-six percent. This is a picture of where we were pre-recession and post-recession. In eight, you can see we had three hundred and five full-time employees. And you move to the right, you can see where the RIF took place, there in ten. And we've continued to either remain flat or actually drop. So we actually have fewer full-time equivalent, full-time employees in the current year that we're in right now as compared to even when the recession hit us. So we've managed to work with less, and, and for us to do that, we had to become more efficient. To give you an idea of what kind of negotiation we've had in the last several years, you can see the first one there is International Association of Firefighters, Fraternal Organization of Police, and then blue, ASME is the Blue Collar Workers, and then everybody else, the non-union. And you can see that recession hit at about nine there. We'd already had those negotiations in place. So we had to deal with smaller and smaller resources, but at the same time, we had to meet our contractual obligations, and we did it. And so you can see in year ten, where the non-union and ASME guy folks actually didn't receive anything. And that's when the contracts came up. And so we've since renegotiated, and you can see down at the very bottom, that's the most recent one that you all approved, with fire and police, one percent. And ASME, that is, that is a continuing contract. I think we have one more year of that, and they're at one seventy-five. And we'll, we built into the budget for next year, one seventy-five wage adjustment for even the non-union folks. A lot of talk about retirement, our pension costs. Hazard duty, that means police and fire, people that carry weapons or fight fires, they can retire quicker than non-hazard folks. And so their rate is a little higher. And as you've probably read recently, we have now changed, not we, the state has changed the way they do business. Anybody that was hired after January one of two thousand fourteen now has a different type of retirement plan. And, but we have to continue to pay for those people that are already in the system. And so fortunately, you can see in fourteen, the, the actual contribution rate actually went down. In fifteen, you don't see it there, but it actually went down a little bit again. Now, that's all good news, but ratio, or contribution rates north of thirty-four percent are still high. So what that means is, for every dollar that we pay hazard duty folks, thirty-four to thirty-five cents is set aside for pensions, not counting anything else. Next slide is for non-police, non-fire, or non-hazardity folks, like the rest of us in the room here. And you can see the rates are substantially less, and the reason being, they have to work longer. Used to be twenty-seven, twenty-seven and a half years, and so you can spread the cost over more years. And again, even in the, in that, this group, the rate is high, but it's coming down. And again, in fifteen, it should be a little bit less, but again, it's close to eighteen percent. And so, and for, like, for instance, for Tammy up here, the city clerk, for us to pay her one dollar, we actually had to match it almost, you know, twenty cents, just for her pension.
Well, this, this is a, one of the most important slides in here. It's done by, what, decades, John?
Yes.
I actually presented this similar slide in a talk to Rotary a couple of months ago, just to kind of show you for those periods of ten years, the different constraints that we've been working under. I refer to nineteen eighties or even the nineties, in a sense, as the good old days, if you want to call it that. Certainly between nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty-nine, we were looking at a revenue growth that averaged, what, could you say it, six point seven percent?
Yeah, it's almost seven percent, yeah.
From year to year?
Every year.
Over that period of time. It dropped down to four point eleven for the next decade, and then two point nine seven, which still was manageable when you think about three percent revenue growth. But for the last four years, and continuing on to next year, for the most part, we've managed with the revenue growth of, of about one and a half percent. And that is just really important to consider from a lot of angles. The City of Paducah, I think, has met the challenge without significant service delivery reductions or quality. And as John said, becoming more efficient was probably the biggest key there. I think it's a credit to the entire organization. It's also suggestive of some things, and it's suggestive, among other things, of the need to continue to strive to become more efficient. And I think also for the city to be mindful that it costs money to expand our role, and we need to live within our resources if we're going to manage with such a modest revenue growth. Now, that does not suggest that there may not be some things that we need or have put off because of those revenues. And I think some of those things, we're going to talk about during the presentation of the budget. And we may need to consider creating the means, or maybe through some prioritization process, coming up with the resolve to address some things that maybe were set aside or, or not dealt with in a sustainable way during the past number of years as we tried to manage through that very, very difficult period of time.
The eighties were good. Okay, back to now. Again, we went back to seven. We wanted you to see pre-recession numbers. This is really the flagship of the general fund. As you can see, this is the revenue for apparel tax. And in seven, and I have the wrong glasses on, so I'm having a hard time seeing this, but, yeah, hello. In seven, the revenue, gross revenue for apparel was just, just above twelve million dollars. And then it, it started to flatten out in nine and ten, you can see that it did. It didn't really do much until eleven. Twelve, it came up. Thirteen, it kind of flattened out again. Fourteen, we expected to be close to fourteen million. We're, we're thankful that we're getting that. We're thankful that we don't have to sweat it out and continue to wonder if it's going to even remain flat. And it wasn't too many years ago when we believed flat was good. And we'd like to see that continue to grow as we expand the economy, people go back to work, and people are making more money. It helps all of us. This is the business license tax. This is based on different rate schedules for the company, businesses. And it basically, it's the tax on the first three and a half million dollars of their gross income. Now, it's been flat for years and years and years. That doesn't mean the economy is not expanding because, again, we tax on the first three and a half million. After that, the tax is significantly less. So I believe that the gross economy is, is expanding. And even this is just north of four million dollars. Flat's good. Property tax trends, city manager mentioned this a while ago. For the first time in a long time, we actually took the maximum we could take in growth in fourteen, and you can see on the far right, it actually has, has gone up a little bit, just shy of four million dollars, about three point eight million. And it is our intention to continue to take that until we're told not to.
And I would mention that last year, the majority of that growth came through an increase in the valuation. It required a minor adjustment to the rate, and as of now, our best information would be that that would be similar for next year, should we choose to take the full four percent. So the, the positive indicated there is that our valuation is continuing to increase, but because of the limitation to other forms of taxation, this is the one with the mechanic that allows us to allow some growth to occur through a combination of the valuation increase and, and some small adjustment to the rate to get to that full four percent.
Exactly. And you may remember, it's been a lot of years, but I think it was ninety-five, our tax rate was like forty-five, forty-six cents. Now it's twenty-five cents. So it has gone down substantially. This is one of our favorite tax trends, and it's the most difficult one that we've ever had to track in my almost quarter century here. If, when the recession was upon us, in eight, nine, we saw it go down in nine, ten, eleven, and every time we were preparing a budget, we didn't know what was going to happen next year, just like nobody else knew. But it finally did bottom out in eleven. It peaked out in eight at about four, four point eight million per year. And in ten, rather, in eleven, it bottomed out finally at three and a half million. And it hurt. And you can see that from the peak to the valley there, it's over a million dollars in one year, and that's a huge amount of money for us. Fortunately, in the last couple of years, it has continued to come back, and we're anticipating fourteen, as you can see, it should be around four million dollars, back to perhaps pre-recession levels. And I'd like to see it continue to grow, of course.
What is the percentage on that?
Six.
What's the maximum allowed?
I don't know that there is one.
When's the last time we raised it?
Not, not since I've been here, we haven't.
In twenty-five years?
Yeah.
What are other communities? You said ours is at six percent?
I've seen them over the years. One time, I think it was Ashland, it was much as ten and twelve percent. It, it really, it varies throughout the Commonwealth, from five and six percent to twelve. I've never, I haven't seen anything much beyond twelve. But it's, it's, I don't believe that KRS limits you. It's what you want it to be.
Every year, John puts a piece of artwork in this presentation, and we are at a fork in the road. I'm not entirely sure what he means by that. It reminds me of the Yogi Berra quote that if you reach a fork in the road, you ought to take it. So I'm just going to leave this to you to ponder, I guess, but I think it is suggestive probably of the fact that our resources that are being generated within the city budget are and can be consumed within the city budget itself, and probably more so than that if there were more resources. So the, the capital improvement process that, that the finance office kicked off last year and expanded upon this year, there are a lot of benefits to that. And I was a little surprised when I came here that the city didn't do a little bit more planning in, in this area. But of course, the recession, when it hit, and, and the city was in the recession when I arrived, kind of threw a lot of that out the window because it was really hard to project, at least financially, because of the impact that the recession was having on a lot of our, our revenues, as you saw on some of those charts. Nonetheless, it still made sense, and continues to make sense, to plan, to have our eyes open to what our capital maintenance and improvements needs are. And we have stepped that up in recent years, and we now are, are linking that with some numbers, although I'm not necessarily going to show those tonight. But we really, really made, I think, great strides in the last few years at creating an awareness of what the city's responsibilities are financially and otherwise to maintain its assets, very important assets that are critical, whether they be buildings, equipment, or what have you, in sustaining the very important operations that the city is duty-bound to provide for its, for its citizenry. So there are a lot of, a lot of things behind this. As I said, it's a management planning tool. It also is a focused effort that is associated with our responsibility to sustain the operations. Prioritization is always a part of that. We do a lot of that internally. The commission gets involved with that as well. And at budget time, particularly when we look at the investment fund and the demands on it that exceed what the available resources are from year to year, how do you make those decisions? You do it based on prioritization. And again, a long-term view, we need to be able to think beyond today in order to govern the city and manage the city responsibly. We need to have an awareness of, of our long-term responsibilities and needs, again, to do certain things to sustain our ability to provide those services. What are some of the major project needs that are, are in our CIP? This is just a sample. It's not intended to be exhaustive of everything in there, but you take a look at something like the flood wall, I might label that a little bit of a sleeper, but that's a twenty-two, twenty-three million dollar project that has a city match requirement of, what is it? Thirty-five percent or something like that. Well, we all know the feds aren't going to fund that all in one shot, but as they do successively over the years, we need to be in a position to meet that thirty-five percent funding requirement. So thirty-five percent of twenty-two, twenty-three million, of course, is, is a lot of money. A lot of these are familiar to you. Radio controller upgrade is a big issue in the nine-one-one operation. City Hall renovation, we're continuing to do work and anticipate a report coming forward to you in the next couple of weeks that refines some of the numbers projections that were made last year, and also updates some structural analysis that was done on the building by Apex Engineering a few years ago. As you are aware, there is a, an effort underway to look at the, what would be involved in replacing the agent aging and, in many ways, deficient police and fire headquarters buildings in the city. This isn't necessarily fun stuff. It's a little daunting, for sure, but it's part of what our responsibilities are. I think it's, I take it very seriously as a responsibility that we have to you, and I'm sure you feel the same way about the responsibility that you have to the citizenry. Establishing priorities within funding constraints is tough work. It's really tough work, but it's very meaningful work. And sometimes the decisions that have to be made are not necessarily popular, at least in the short term, but they're very important in the long term. So we just want to emphasize that that is really what this planning process is all about. Funding options for capital improvements, again, these are the type of things we typically do and use. We, again, look at the investment fund up and down every year. We've talked in the past about, and it was brought up tonight, the, what, what is involved in increasing the insurance premium tax rate. It's probably in the general fund, the most powerful, if you want to use that term, revenue source that, that we have and are in a position to at least consider increasing. We issue debt to do long-term financing for capital needs, and we talk a lot, and we'll talk more about the role that debt payment is playing in the investment, investment fund as it continues to consume a little bit more of the investment fund revenue every year. But let me assure you that debt financing is not unusual. It is a very standard and acceptable form. It is a very standard and acceptable form of financing public improvements in cities. So let's not consider that we are unusual or in any way irresponsible in, in our use of debt. Of course, the key thing there is the ability to make the debt payments, and that's where the prioritization of the investment fund revenue from year to year comes into play. Spending down fund balance, we put that on here because we think we're in a position this year to consider going to our general fund fund balance whilst, while still increasing the reserve from eight percent to ten percent, going into that fund balance to do a little bit of capital financing. Not a lot, I'm not talking millions of dollars, maybe we're talking a few hundred thousand dollars here, to maybe address some replacement needs that we have had to set aside for the past few years. It's nice to be able to do that, consider it to be a one-time option if we are. It's not something that typically you look forward to being able to do year to year. It's not unusual for us to balance the general fund operations a little bit out of fund balance, but that's more of a mechanic than it is a drawdown, because we typically underspend the budget the following year anyway. But maybe a process of doing that for a number of years has put us in a position of being able to consider allocating some of that reserve for some capital financing. We talk about the investment fund, and really, our budget is, there are a lot of different sections to it, but where the general fund's considered or general government, we're divided into kind of operations, which is the operational side of, of the general fund, and then the investment fund where the half cent payroll, what's the total? Two, two percent. It was increased by half a percent. Two percent payroll tax is dedicated.
How much is dedicated to investment?
One half cent is dedicated to the investment fund, and when that half cent was authorized by the voters a number of years ago, it was authorized for main purposes. So categorically, it is within these areas that that money is allocated from year to year. And we've made the point, and continue to make the point, that without that half cent payroll tax, the city's discretionary spending ability would be far less, I would argue. And taking a look at this slide, I may now choose to take that word discretionary out of there. It's much more structural than it is discretionary, wouldn't you agree, John? In terms of how that money's been allocated. So it's become, there's a strong dependency that has been established there, and in fact, there's far less discretion for how that money is being spent than what there would have been five, seven years ago. And part of the reason for that is that this fund is the only source of revenue currently available to construct, maintain facilities, infrastructure necessary to deliver core services. Much of the bonded indebtedness of the city is expensed against this fund, and within those categories, of course, to be compliant with the referendum. And as you know, our support for outside agencies comes through that fund as well. Debt service, we're projecting through the investment fund will consume thirty-six point five percent of the expenditures of that fund, or thirty-five, or thirty-six point five percent of the revenue from that half cent payroll tax next year will be allocated towards debt service. We know that because of what's in place already. We're anticipating some additional bonding this year, as you are aware of. As far as what we see as a little more increased priority for some of the investment fund money, again, coming from the planning process that followed the community survey, we're hearing a lot from a lot of you and others about more funding for neighborhood revitalization, and neighborhood revitalization, I'm using that term very broadly. And again, I make the point here, increased focus on city facility repair and replacement, that's come about as a result of the planning processes that we talked about earlier. So that is a, a little bit of a picture inside the budget preparation process. We propose to have the budget workshop on May twenty-seventh. This would be a late afternoon start. The last couple of years, we've done a ten o'clock start. School continues later on this year, so that would be a problem, I think. And I know three years ago, we did a four o'clock start when we were over at the Public Works Facility that year, and that seemed to work okay. So if you would please check your schedules and availability for that date and time, and let us know, that would be our proposed date for it. And trying to rotate this around to different facilities, the idea came up to have it at the convention center this year, so that's fine. It's as good as any place, it seems to me. So unless there are any questions, that's, that's what we have for you.
So it's a Tuesday after Memorial?
It is, and I know school's in session that day, so presumably, folks wouldn't be out of town like during spring break or something, but you never know. So please check it and let us know. I think we have some, some flexibility, but maybe not too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Do you have any commissioner comments?
Do have a request for executive session for pending litigation.
Okay.
Briefly.
Any public comment? Yes, sir.
I've sat through a number of meetings, some of you know that, especially in this meeting. Heard a lot about downtown, lower town, and all that stuff. Now, as some of you know, I live out in the burbs. You know what the burbs are?
You live on Phillips Avenue.
That's right. And there are some problems. There are people not taking care of their property, like they used to back when we first moved into that area. People died, or moved away, retired, and nobody's looking at our end of town. Nobody talks about our end of town. And I don't think our end of town, no matter that a couple of you commissioners live out there, represent our end of town. Unfortunately, the people that live in that part of town aren't interested enough, because they don't come here, they don't do anything. Matter of fact, the West End Neighborhood Association, it came about when they were burning poison ivy out there, the West End, and some of the, mainly ladies, went bananas and formed that up, and we had big meetings. Now, we're lucky if we have two a year, and we're lucky we get ten people in them. But I don't think that this commission, untotaled, represents anybody in the West End, and hasn't since, I'll refer to him as Billy the Banker, came into office. And it's unfortunate.
Will you give us your address?
He lives in Phillips, Phillips Avenue.
Well, I live further out than you do.
I know, you heard what I said. There's a couple of you that live out there, but you don't represent us out there. You live in that little rich, have I, you?
I wouldn't say that.
I know where you live. I know where all of you live. I'm trouble that way, aren't I?
Yes, you are.
No, you're not.
But it's just upsetting. I'm getting old. I'm getting cranky. I'm getting to the point where I don't care what I say, as long as it's within reason. But it's about time some of you people started thinking about outside, this lower town area. I mentioned to you, Mayor, that I was at that opening, artist opening, and you told them about how the great things were going to happen, Ninth Street to the River. Well, it is, but it's not doing Twenty-Eighth Street and out, so. And to talk, a quick aside, talking about more revenue, I think we'll pass a can around for gasoline money, and we may have to return the city manager to Dodge City. He'll be in the trunk, and it's pretty rough going over those railroad tracks going into town. That's just in humor. I'd appreciate if you'd take some interest in the burbs, as I call them. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
You know, we have a neighborhood walk program that, and we'd love to come out and walk through the neighborhood.
I could tell you about that if you want.
I'm sorry?
We got a call, Charles, I can't remember Charles' last name now, it's terrible, told us, he got a call on a Thursday. You're going to be out there on Saturday.
For a neighborhood walk?
Yeah. Not recently, a couple of years ago, before you were mayor, when you were doing it more often. And we're a big...
I don't, I don't remember that, but...
Well, you didn't go, because no one could be told. We're a large area. You'd never get to all the...
Well, no, but we could do the smaller sections at a time. We'd be glad to come out.
Walking around's not going to do anything.
Well, you can point out those areas that you're having problems with. Yes, that would help. We've done it many times.
Well, you can drive around there anytime you want. That's, that's what I have to say tonight, though, that all you're talking about is downtown to the river, and you're not representing the people out there. Thank you.
All right, who has the executive session?
I do.
Okay.
I move that the board go into a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS six one point eight one oh one C.
Second.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Okay, we will not be taking any action when we come back, so meeting is adjourned.